We're gonna get started today. We're gonna open, we're gonna start the meeting at 5:30. Can I get a roll call please?
Yes. So we have Board President, Mr. Patterson.
Present.
Board Secretary, Ms. Johnson.
Here.
Board Member, Ms. Griffin.
Present.
Board Member, or Board President, Mr. Dawson.
Present.
Board Member, Mr. Hannah, absent. Board Member, Mr. Myrick, absent. As well as Board Member, Mr. Buchanan, absent.
Let's do the pledge of allegiance. Everybody please stand.
(inaudible) of the United States of America. And it's to the Republic, forwards to say that one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have a moment of silence, please. Everybody turn their phone off on mute, please. Thank you. So next, we're gonna have public comment portion. First up, we got Mayor Katrina Thompson.
Good afternoon, Board of Education, staff and community. I am Mayor Katrina Thompson with the Village of Broadview. This year, we proudly celebrate 160 years since Juneteenth, a defining moment in American history. On June 19th, 1865, enslaved Americans in Galveston, Texas, Texas finally learned their freedom more than two years after the Emancipation Proclamation. It was the delayed pro, it was a delayed promise, but it ignited a legacy of resilience, determination and hope that we still honor today. In the Village of Broadview, Juneteenth is not just a day on the calendar, it's a living commitment. We are proud to be the first municipality in Illinois to recognize Juneteenth as a paid holiday for municipal workers, which is now a federal holiday. And we continue to celebrate because freedom is not a moment, it is a movement. At the heart of our celebration is the Freedom, the Broadview Freedom School, a program rooted in love, learning and leadership. Inspired by the vision of Marion Wright Edelman, who is the renowned American activist, lawyer and advocate for children's rights. She is best known as the founder and longtime president of the Children's Defense Fund, CDF. A national nonprofit organization dedicated to advocate for policies and programs that uplift children, especially poor minority children out of poverty and provide them with equal opportunities who said, "You really can change the world if you care enough." That's what Freedom School teaches our scholars, that they matter, that their voices are powerful and that they are capable of creating change, not just somebody, but starting now. Each summer, our young people gather not just to read books and study history, but to engage in critical thinking, cultural pride and civic responsibility. They learn to say, "I can make a difference in myself, in my family, in my community and in my world." And they learn what it means to serve with purpose, with courage and with compassion. As the mayor of this great village, I want our youth to know, "I can and I am willing to serve." Because that's how we build the kind of future that our ancestors dreamed of. We celebrate Juneteenth in Broadview not just to honor the past, but to invest in the future. We do it to heal, to educate and to unite. We do it because we know that when a community learns together, grows together and celebrates together, freedom becomes more than a world, a word, it becomes a way of life. To our volunteers, partners, educators and families, thank you for believing in this vision. And to our scholars, keep rising, keep reaching and always remember, you are the legacy and the light. Happy Juneteenth. Thank you.
Next, Deborah Vans, please.
Good evening. I am Deborah Vans, founder and CEO of the Answer Incorporated Autism Awareness and Support Agency, and I'm here this evening to simply say thank you. Thank you for allowing us to be one of your trusted partners for the last five years with our bullying is not the answer program. And recent partner in the last couple of years with Freedom School. From the numbers, we have noticed that, and from conversations with Dr. Jackson and other staff, that the bullying incidents have minimized in Lindop School, that your students have actually recognized the special needs students that are mainstream within Lindop. And that's what our message is all about, our children being able to cohesively learn with each other, play with each other and grow with each other. And I also would like to invite you to our second annual first responders breakfast that will be held at the Broadview Family Restaurant, June 28th from 10 until 12. And it's a free breakfast. It's for special needs families and it's for our first responders, for the families that have special needs to actually be able to integrate and be able to be comfortable around the first responders. So we would like to personally invite you there and to invite you to our 18th annual Met Gala for Autism and for you to accept your award for being one of our trusted partners. So again, thank you so much, Lindop, for being one of our partners to help our children in this community to thrive. Thank you. And I want to leave you with this information.
Willis Harper?
Good evening, good evening, everyone. I'm here today to speak on behalf of the teachers. Since my daughter been in kindergarten, I have to be honest, I have had a really, really good, really, really, really good experience with all of the teachers from K, from Ms. Mills, all the way to her last teacher, Ms. Stewart and Mr. Villasnow. I want to give a special, special shout out to Ms. Stewart this year. My daughter was struggling a little bit with her last map test scores in English. I reached out to Ms. Stewart and we worked out an arrangement where she took my daughter from recess, she stopped going to recess every day, and she took her lunch period in class with Ms. Stewart and Ms. Stewart went above and beyond to work with my daughter. And because of it, her reading scores went up, I believe it was either 16 or 18 points. Like I teach my daughter, it's not how you start, it's how you finish. We got one more year to go. It's bittersweet, but I do have two more boys coming up right after her. And just to all the teachers, for real, like all of you all, literally, to me, you know, I've never had a bad experience. And I really do appreciate you all. I was just talking to Ms. Jones earlier about trying to work with my daughter. Cause right now, I'm trying to get her ready to take a few placement tests for some of the schools like Fenwick, Nasterville, et cetera, et cetera. So we trying to work out something to, while she's in Freedom School, to kind of help her to get prepared for that. And I would just like to say to any parents and TV landers listening, the parents is here. Look, Lindop is a really, really good place. And if your kid is struggling, we have to reach out and let the teachers know and try to work with them together, you know what I'm saying? This is a really, really small village. We can do a lot of, a lot of great things, man, if we just work together, right, you know? And it's not about pointing fingers. Sometimes we have to look in the mirror and say, you know, hey, what could I do better? You know, and I know for me, education is really big in my house, especially with my daughter. So just thank you again, like I say, this, I'm serious, it means everything to me. Every teacher, literally, that I have come in contact with has been the best. Every year has gotten better and better and better. Knock on wood, because we're going into eighth grade. But I just wanted to say thank you to you guys and congratulations to the new board members. And man, let's have a great, great, awesome school year coming up. Welcome back, Jackson. I haven't saw you in a while. And thank you, okay? That's it.
Thank you.
Mr. Jerel David?
Good evening, President Patterson, members of the Lindop School Board, faculties, families and community members. My name is Jerel David and I'm a proud graduate of Lindop School District 92, Class of 2022. I still am the former student board member and only student board member to serve on this Board of Education in the entire Proviso Township. And now I'm proud to say I currently serve as a student trustee of Trident College District 504 because of Lindop School District. I've spent the last 10 years now going into my 11th year in student leadership, but it all started here. Lindop isn't just where I studied, it's where I was shaped. This is my home, my alma mater, and let me tell you, I will always show up to protect the village that raised me. Recently, I had the opportunity to visit the Broadview Freedom School and it has stirred something in me. I saw black and brown children fully alive, reading with joy. They were writing with confidence and stepping into power as leaders. This program is funded through the Children's Defense Fund and is increasing literacy, strengthening students' voices and building the type of leaders our communities and classrooms desperately need in a time of now. Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. said this, "Intelligence plus character, that is the goal of true education." And Freedom School embodies both. It is not just a program, Mr. President, it's a movement. And quite honestly, I wish I had something like this when I was here. But I didn't just come here to speak about inspiration, I came to speak of responsibility. We are in a national moment of tension and division across this land. And we are watching rhetoric become more dangerous, leadership become more performative and respect for our community's voices steadily erode. When adults in power use their platforms to bully, belittle or discredit others, especially those working to serve children, I am and we will must call it out for what it is, unacceptable. To bring the kind of behavior into our local school boards, especially here in Lindop, is not only wrong, it's reckless. Let me tell you, our children are watching, our future leaders are taking notes. And if we are not modeling integrity, collaboration and care, then we are failing them at the foundation. As someone who represents over 10,000 students at the college level, I stand before you and say this plainly. We cannot afford to mirror the chaos and toxicity of national politics in our local schools. Dr. King also warned, "Our lives begin to end the day we become silent about the things that matter." And so I will not be silent. Freedom School matters, our children matter, community partnerships matter, and like the View 1701, they matter. Thank you so, Mr. President, let me finish. Thank you so much to Dr. Jackson and to this board. May God bless you and to the students and teachers like Ms. Ebony Jones. Thank you for your continued leadership. Thank you for standing up. Mr. Predic, Mr. President, my name is Jerel David and let me tell you, I am going to be here. And if you want to come and play, let's play, but the community won't. God bless you and I'll see you in 2027.
Raina Mack. Hopefully I said that right.
Good evening, President Patterson, members of Lindop School Board, faculty and community. My name is Raina Mack. I'm a proud black female owner of the View 1701. I come tonight as a business owner, a community advocate and someone who's deeply committed to the success of children. The View has always stood for excellence, integrity and community. And with that being said, I recently had the honor to visit Broadview's Freedom School, a program that was supported by the Children's Defense Fund. I was truly inspired. The work being done there was really transformational. I saw children growing in literacy. I saw them learning how to write with a purpose. They were communicating with confidence among their peers. It was really powerful. And I did wish that something was like that for my children who are now adults. Freedom School is not just a summer program, but I could tell it was a lifeline. The sharing of alike minds, building leaders and creating safe spaces for youth, especially in this climate we have now. As the owner of the View, I will continue to support programs like this. I actually enjoy being encouraged to have my staff also. I love the fact that adults are able to pour into youth and show them a positive. And I will continue to stand by proudly in the face of any attempts to silence me or shame me in doing so. So I'm here to say that the View's not going anywhere, that we will continue to show up, we will continue to try to speak out and we will continue to stand up for this community and what's right for our children. I thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we got the FOIA requests.
Yeah, so we did receive five FOIA requests and they all have been satisfied.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Jackson. Also upcoming events and correspondence to be read on your own, please.
And we have no correspondence.
We have no correspondence, okay. And consent agenda next.
President Patterson, could you go back to Dr. Jackson pertaining to the FOIA request?
Uh huh, yes.
Was the FOIA request that we received on yesterday at 11:30, was that satisfied?
No, and that one is not listed on here.
Okay. All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah, we're gonna move on to our consent agenda. So we recommend approval, oh, sorry, yeah. Does anybody want to remove anything from the consent agenda? Yeah, I don't think I got that right yet. So I make a motion to approve the consent agenda, including the regular open session minute, meeting minutes for Tuesday, May 20th, 2025. The regular closed session, meeting minutes for Tuesday, May 20th, 2025. The special open session meeting minutes for Thursday, June 5th. The special closed session meeting minutes for Thursday, June 5th, 2025. The Lindop District 92 accounts payable for May 21st, 2025 through June 17th, 2025 in the amount of $341,653.80. The Lindop District 92 activity account reconciliation for May 2025. The Lindop District 92 payroll for May 21st, 2025 through June 17th, 2025 in the amount of $1,334,901.50. Can I get a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Any discussion? No?
No.
All right, roll call, please.
Board President, Mr. Patterson.
Yay.
Board Secretary, Ms. Johnson.
Yes.
Board Member, Ms. Griffin.
Yay.
Board Member, Mr. Hannah.
Yay.
Board Member or Board President, Vice President, Mr. Dawson.
Yay.
Board Member, Mr. Myrick.
Yay.
Board Member, Mr. Buchanan is absent.
Motion carried. Onto old business construction update presented by Mr. Ballantyne.
Good evening, Board of Education, community and staff. Just wanted to give you a brief update on the construction project we have going on here, the library remodel. We've been meeting with the contractor and the architects on a weekly basis. So we just running the Google notes. This is some of the notes we talked with to the last, last time we met with the contractors. We made sure that they're going to replace all the fixtures in the restrooms as they remodeling with Sloan brand. Cause that's the fixtures that we have throughout the rest of the facility. We also spoke with them about the doors inside the media center and some of the plans, they want to leave some of the doors. We're asking them to do a change order and replace those doors since everything else is going to be new. With the intercom system, we having a new intercom system for the entire facility. We discussed locations of putting in the intercom buttons, the last meeting that we had with the architects. And we also just brainstorming on some of the things we can do with some of the remaining funds that we had left over from the bid. We was thinking of doing the gym floor, re sanding the gym floor completely and adding the school logo inside the center court. Maybe looking into doing some door access controls throughout the facility and also removing the drop towel here inside the gymnasium. And we also spoke, we did recommend three change orders. One change order was to repair a domestic water line that has a slight leak that's inside the boiler room. We still waiting on the architect and the construction, construction company to get back to us with pricing on that. And we'll bring that back to you guys at a later date. The second change order was replacing all the stair treads throughout the facility. Some of them are inside some bad shape and since they already replacing stair treads inside some of the stairwells here, we recommend that those get done as well. And the final change order was replacing some of the floor tiles inside here, inside the gymnasium leading to the elevator and also leading to the stage as well. And here's some pictures of some, when the first day of construction, some before and after pictures of the library. They are really progressing really well. The library is pretty much fully demo right now. So everything is anticipated to, for our substantial completion date. Any questions I can answer about the construction projects over?
What's the completion date? What's the completion date for this project?
The substantial completion date is in October.
Okay, thank you.
Just piggybacking on that, I know, I'm not sure that if this is you or if this is Superintendent Jackson. Is it still that if we don't finish by October, we have to return the funds?
Correct.
Yeah, and so if we are on track to complete before December, before October, but we have change orders, do you think that's going to push us back?
That's why I'm pushing, I'm pushing the contractors now to get their numbers, so I can get those numbers to you guys right away. So we can get that order, because they want to order the flooring all at the same time.
Right.
Doing this, yes.
Okay, so you anticipate us still being able to make our October date, okay?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So on to new business discussion. It's gonna be presenters, Ms. Dr. Betts and Ms. Owen, Dr. Robinson.
Good evening, Board Members, Dr. Jackson, community members and staff. Thank you so much for being here. So we're here to discuss the change in terms of the grading system for K-2. Moving from a four-tiered system to a five-tiered system. So previously, we had a four-tiered system that started with masters, mastering all the way to N-not mastering. With the five-tier system that you see here, this aligns to the Illinois Assessment of Readiness. So you see here E, meaning exceeds, all the way to N-not meeting. This is a precision of language, so that parents become acclimated to the Illinois Assessment of Readiness language because their students will be able to take that assessment in grade three. So we're preparing the parents as well as the students, understanding what exceeds means, what approaching means, what partially approaching means. So the main thing is moving in terms of the precision of language.
Good evening, Board Members, Administration, Staff, Dr. Jackson and our community members. I would like to talk about the how we got here. This initiative of planning to move from a four-tier grading system to a five-tier grading system is truly teacher-driven. The teachers have been meeting all year in order to consider what's best practices for communicating learning to families. And that is done in order to ensure that there is a precise language for our families. Also, if you see here on the exceeding for E, the grading scale is high and that is because the skills that's needed to mastery at that grade level is crucial foundational skills for our students to learn for future learning. Thank you so much.
Good evening, Board of Education, Administration, Staff and Community. The next steps to this process would be that we would need to code this into Power Schools so that the grade book is set up and ready for the upcoming 25, 26 school year and that report cards would flow into this grading system. And also, we would need to roll this out with our families. And so we would be working with our teachers in grades K through 2 to roll this out and explain it and make sure that it is precisely communicated to our families. So they understand why we're doing this and what it means for their child's learning. Thank you. Are there any questions?
Yeah, actually I do. I was, the grading scale, I was a little concerned because I know we, did we get any parental involvement with this? To kind of see how parents feel about the grading scale kind of coming up a little bit? Did we do any parental involvement on this?
So previously, the four-tiered scale, so moving from the four-tier. Previously, it was 95 to 100 would be mastery. So that was previous. So we haven't contacted the parents in terms of, all we're doing is adding one letter grade to it.
Yeah, so that's a no.
Yeah, that's what I said. Yeah, no, we haven't because we're moving from a four-tier. So the whole goal of this is to make it more precise in terms of language for the parents, in order to help the parents.
Yeah, okay, well, I definitely would like to see us get a little, you know, parental feedback. You know, because with us having some struggling test scores and math and reading, just to kind of get an input. So, you know, because you know, one point can make a big difference.
Yeah.
We want to try to, and we can do something to work with them and get some feedback from the parents. That would be great.
Okay, so what I hear you saying is that you would like us to survey the parents with students in kindergarten through grade 2 to let them know that we're moving, like what their thoughts are moving from the four-tier system, yeah, to the five-tier system.
Yes, that would be great.
Okay.
I had one question. Correct me if I'm wrong, but did you not say you were going from the four to the five tier because that's how the grades are done within the system?
So that's how it's correlated to, in terms of the language with the Illinois Assessment for Readiness, yeah.
Okay, so basically, we're just going according to the same system that they have. So that it's not like you have to figure, okay, in what, how close you are to theirs if we're adopting the same one.
Correct.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Dawson, I just wanted to ask a quick question. You moving from the four to the five, just for the laypeople. I understand that the letters are different, but if it was four, was it always down to 50%? Or when it was four, what was the, the numbers?
No, when it was 4%, so when it was not meeting, it was 0 to 69.
Okay, that's, and the reason I was saying that is because it seemed like we were lowering it down to 50. So it's like a child would be at 51%. I'm, I'm looking at it and correlating like A, B, C, D.
Right, yeah.
Almost like with third grade through eighth.
You got it.
And so what I'm looking at this, when you change it, it seems like, this is a layperson now, that the bar is being lowered because then a child is at like 51%, whereas before they would have been at 69%.
0 to 69.
Exactly, 0 to 69. Is that, am I seeing it right?
So no, we're not lowering the bar. So what we're doing, we're not, so what we're doing is making sure that it's correlated more to the Illinois Assessment for Readiness. So what, so 50 is not meeting grade level. So remember that K-2 has a standards-based report card. So theirs is not A, B, C, D. It's a standard, yes. So they're, we're looking at, so we're looking to see, has a child accomplished that skill under the, under that specific standard?
So when they go to, let's say, third grade, this wouldn't be like correlating to third grade like A, B, C, D. It would be.
So it kind of moves towards that because in third grade, like the lowest grade unsatisfactory is from 50.
69?
Yes.
Right.
Yes, from 50 to, 59, 50 to 59 is unsatisfactory, from third grade all the way to eighth grade.
Oh, okay.
Yes.
All right, all right. That's why, it was the numbers for me. All right, I got it.
Thank you.
We'll see where it goes.
Any other questions? Okay.
Dr. Betts, talk a little bit more about the 50% and why we have it there.
Dr. Betts, talk a little bit more about the fifty percent and why we have it there.
Thank you, Dr. Jackson. The, um, when we go down to fifty percent and you can see, um, these, these grade ranges here. Previously that fifty percent bottomed all the way out to zero. And so not meeting standards or being at that lower end of the four point scale would mean that you have like, you had a sixty-nine percent range of numbers. And so it was kind of like, well, what does that mean? If I have a zero, how can I ever climb out of that? And that didn't tell us if we were, it, it wasn't precise enough to tell us if we were mastering. Of course, K through two has moved away from just taking plain averages in that way. And they look at the frequency of the student's mastery of each skill. So it's not your traditional grading system anyway. Um, but it, it makes those tiers a little bit more equal so that you're not bottoming out on one and then you can never climb out of that hole.
Anybody got any other questions, board members? No?
Oh, thank you, ladies.
Thank you, thank you.
I make a motion to approve the contract for Metro Chicago Math Initiative Professional Development Consortium for the twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six school year in the amount of thirteen thousand, six hundred, sixty-six dollars for the K through eighth grade teachers to be paid from Title I funds.
Cheryl Griffin, I second.
Uh, any, any discussion on that? I have nothing.
Oh, uh, let them present first.
Oh, they're gonna present, no, which one? Okay. I didn't see. Oh, you guys are presenting, okay.
All right, in terms of this, with the math consortium, what we're going to be getting is all teachers who teach math in kindergarten through grade eight, as well as special education teachers, will receive four mandatory coaching sessions. They will all be entitled to the professional development and book studies that are taking place with MCMI. As well as MCMI teaches differentiating instruction to help our teachers as well as the mathematical practices. All of our students have the ability to be mathematicians and this consortium, which we've been members of for twenty plus years, will allow us to do that.
Good evening again. Um, the cost for this program will come out of our Title I funds because there's a tremendous need for math instructional support at our school. Um, the funds will, um, be a match for this program. And also we'll be able to help our students and help us in order to change mathematical practices at our school. Uh, when administration goes around for focus walks, we will also be able, if we see a teacher that has a need, be able to access, um, additional coaching from MCMI program. Thank you so much.
Any more question? Oh, wait, somebody else.
The next thing, oh.
Questions? Roll call.
Board President, Mr. Patterson?
Yay.
Board Secretary, Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Board Member, Mrs. Griffin?
Yay.
Board President, Mr. Dawson? Vice President, Mr. Dawson?
Yay.
Board Member, Mr. Hannah?
Yay.
Board Member, Mr. Myrick?
Yay.
Board Member, Mr. Buchanan, absent.
Motion carries. Um, Dr. Jackson?
Yes, yes. Thank you so much. So I'm asking.
We need to make the motion first. Make the motion first.
Oh, it's not me. Oh, I'm sorry.
I motion to approve.
No, you gotta read the whole thing.
I recommend, uh, recommend, uh, a recommended approval to allow administration staff to extend the use of the financial year twenty-twenty-four vacation days through July thirty-first, twenty-twenty-five, and to be issued a payout if days are remaining.
Second.
Brian Dawson, I second.
So, um, thank you so much. Um, in past years, uh, the board has been gracious enough to allow the administrators, uh, the custodial staff, as well as the administrative assistants to carry over any days that they may not have been able to use throughout the year. Uh, what has typically happened is that allowing us to use this through July thirty-first uh, will give us some more time to use it because during the year you are not able to use them. Uh, and it has also been a payout if there were any days, uh, remaining.
Anybody got any questions? Nobody?
Yeah, I do.
Okay.
Um, I partly agree with this. My question is, did you guys do this last year?
Um, we've done it.
How many years before?
Um, you know what? I'm not sure, but as long as I've been here, they have.
You know, it's been doing it for a while.
With the, um, with the, um, payout by the date that they have on, on the agenda, was that date always there?
We're using, uh, them through July thirty-first.
So if July thirty-first, and they, um, they still have vacation time available, then they get paid out?
Yes.
Am I reading that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
You, you, you got some more, remember Griffin? Were you gonna say something? Okay. Uh, well, the only question I had with it, um, which I'm, I'm pretty much fine with it, but I was just wondering with the payouts. So there's no way we can offer like a, I know you said extended too. So, so are the sick days paid out or is it just the vacation? So there's no way we can roll it over as opposed to paying it out? Just give them an extra week as an option? Have we ever tried that?
It could be, but we've not ever done it.
Okay, would that be problematic to do or to consider?
It wouldn't be problematic to consider at all.
Okay, okay. Uh, I mean, we could talk about how you feel about that, but yeah, I just, that was just something I was thinking because that's kind of what we do. So, okay, um, roll call.
Board President, Mr. Patterson?
Yay.
Board Secretary, Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Board Vice President, Mr. Dawson?
Yay.
Board Member, Ms. Griffin?
Yay.
Board Member, Mr. Hannah?
Yeah.
Board Member, Mr. Myrick?
Yay.
Board Member, Mr. Buchanan, absent.
Uh, Myrick.
Cheryl Griffin, I make a motion to approve to attend and/or support Ansar's Inc., Ansar's Inc. Eighteenth Annual Met Gala for Autism Fundraiser on Saturday, September twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-five at Waterford Banquets and Conference Center in Elmhurst, Illinois in the amount of one hundred and sixty dollars per person at a total cost of three hundred and twenty dollars for two tickets. Can I get a second?
Brian Dawson, I second.
Roll call. Oh, any discussion on that? I'm sorry. Dr. Jackson, we had, we have a presentation?
Well, and there, no, that, that is, um, the flyer that they have going out for the upcoming gala.
Yeah.
And, uh, we have participated, uh, before.
Okay, yeah. Anybody got any questions?
Yeah, I do. One thing that, um, this, uh, is this for a full table?
No, it's just two people.
That's two.
For two people?
There's two on here.
Okay.
Roll call.
Yes, Board President, Mr. Patterson?
Yay.
Board Secretary, Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Board Vice President, Mr. Dawson?
Yay.
Board Member, Ms. Griffin?
Yay.
Board Member, Mr. Hannah?
Yeah.
Board Member, Mr. Myrick?
Yay.
Board Member, Mr. Buchanan?
I just walked in, but yeah.
You can abstain if you want or you can abstain. Which one?
Yay.
Oh, he said, oh.
Yes, he did.
Motion carries.
Motion carries. Thank you, Demara. Mr. Myrick, Mr. Myrick.
I make a motion to approve, to approve to purchase Z space software at a total cost of seventeen thousand, two hundred and forty-six dollars and seventy-two cent, uh, which sixteen thousand, four hundred and three dollars is to be paid from the twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five Computer Science Equity Grant and the remaining eight forty-three seventy-two to be paid from the Education Fund.
Cheryl Griffin, I second.
Any discussion? Oh, Ms. Allen School is gonna present.
Good evening, Board of Education, key meeting members, staff and guests. So Z space is a digital tool that provides simulations for the instructional core classes like math, science, ELA and social studies. It's adaptable across multiple grade levels. Z space was originally used to provide on-job training simulations for careers in the medical field. But now it's been used at Lindop in the education field. Z space helps close the digital divide, gives children access to high-tech college-ready classes and technology. It closes the digital instructional divide for teachers. Z space provides hands-on experiential learning for children and facilitates a deeper connection to content. Schools in the United States have varying levels of digital access and college and career-ready programs for students and children. Students who are exposed to digital tools use them regularly and experience an easier access to types of learning they will need to do with a research, high school, college and careers. So Lindup presented at the Tech twenty-seventeen in Springfield. Uh, Z space is from twenty-sixteen, so it's been in our school for a long time. Up there you can see us presenting at the, uh, Tech twenty-seventeen to the state representative. And, um, it doesn't require glasses, the current one, as you can see up there. So Lindup has received an allocation of sixteen thousand, forty-three dollars from the Computer Science Equity Grant. And this grant needs to be spent by June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-five. So this slide right here is for discussion for the upcoming fiscal year. So Lindup's cost would be, um, fifty-three thousand, five hundred and ninety-two after the grant. And this includes the software, a cart, twelve Z space computers, as well as training for staff. And this, any questions?
Yes, I got a question. So, uh, okay, so is it, the cost for us is eight hundred and forty-three dollars and seventy-two cent? Or is it fifty-three thousand? Uh, I'm confused.
For this board meeting, uh, for this fiscal year, it's going to be the, um, eight hundred and forty-three dollars. And then it'll be, this is discussed now for the next fiscal year.
Okay, so if we approve this, then we have to automatically approve the fifty-three thousand later?
Well, it's for, it's for discussion right now for upcoming fiscal year if we're gonna.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll talk about it soon.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you so much for asking. Okay. So we got this grant and it has to be expended by June thirtieth. Um, our Z space currently that we used to use with some frequency is not operable anymore because it's out of date, which Mr. L S Q explained. But in order to make this purchase, we need to budget within the upcoming fiscal year. So the remainder would be placed into the budget under the Technology Department for the upcoming fiscal year. So that's why we, we've split the amounts so that we can take care of using the grant so that the students get the benefit. Otherwise it would be, um, almost seventy thousand dollars to make the purchase.
Okay, I'm still a little confused. So it's like if we, you said this year is gonna be eight hundred and forty-three, but then next year we're going to, um, we'll, we'll only get sixteen thousand for the grant total?
Yeah, the sixteen thousand was just issued recently and it has to be spent by June thirtieth of this current fiscal year, June thirtieth of twenty-twenty-five. So for the next fiscal year, starting July first of twenty-twenty-five and going through June thirtieth of twenty-twenty-six, we would be asking you, we would be coming back next month and asking if you could put the remainder into the budget? If we could consider budgeting for that under the technology budget?
The remainder would be seventeen thousand, two forty-six?
The remainder would be fifty-three thousand, five hundred and ninety-two.
See, we don't have that. It's not shown here.
It's right here.
I think, yeah, it's good to have the information before we get here so we can prepare for it. That number that you're talking about, it's not here.
Yeah, it's crossed.
So it's here. So the sixteen thousand, four hundred and three was the allocation in the grant. And in order to split the invoice across two fiscal years, you know, because you can't buy like half of a software subscription, you have to buy the entire thing. We were able to get Z space to agree to invoice us for seventeen thousand, two hundred, forty-six.
Okay.
And seventy-two cents. When you take away then that sixteen thousand, four oh three, you're left with eight hundred and forty-three dollars and seventy-two cents. And that would just, that would come out of the Education Fund.
Correct. And Dr. Betts?
This year.
If I'm understanding you correctly, we are already in a situation where we've got to update our Z space, correct?
Yes.
So that's nothing new that's coming to the table because of our grant. We were due to update it anyway because it's no longer viable.
We were due to upgrade it. We did not, um, upgrade the equipment last time.
Right.
But we knew that they were going to have another upgrade very shortly and now that time has come. Um, but this is something that is used in the career field for training. We really want some access to this for our children because it enhances what our teachers are able to then do in the classroom. It's not something that can operate on a Chromebook. Um, and so we would put these units on a cart and it would be something that people could check out across grade levels.
Yeah, I did, uh, take time out to look up, uh, what Z space is. So I'm just trying to figure out how does that correlate to, do we have any data that that increased any academics? In any kind of way that it helped reading or math scores? Because when I looked it up, I mean, looks like a cool toy. But I'm just trying to figure out how can it correlate to academic success to spend fifty-three thousand dollars? And although we want our children to, you know, be advanced in technology, I'm just looking for some data, how it helped with reading or math in any kind of way.
It was most heavily used in our science classrooms. And so if you look at our Illinois Science Assessment Scores, that's where it would be tracked best right now. We're looking at our N W E A MAP scores in science that have gone up. Um, students in Illinois take the Illinois Science Assessment at fifth grade, eighth grade and tenth grade. So we only have that summative data twice in their time with us. Um, however, there are more lessons now in Z space than ever before and they've been developing this. So think about social studies. So now I can have a simulation in my classroom. I don't have to just read about it. I can experience certain aspects of what I'm studying. The same would be true for the sciences. So think about, um, dissecting something. Um, you don't have to actually, uh, of course we can dissect things, but you don't have to do that. Like you can practice on Z space in three D in augmented reality using their software prior to going in and actually dissecting something. Um, think about outer space. Uh, there's also a lot now with English Language Arts and math. So there's a lot of lessons that bring the concepts to life rather than just reading about it and studying it in a book. Um, and also if you think about the way that career fields are going and STEM, um, it gives our students an opportunity to see what it might feel like to simulate that career and to envision themselves doing something professional after they graduate high school.
So no academic data though?
I would have to pull that for you.
Okay, I was just trying.
We do have it. Oh, yeah, we have data everywhere. Yes, we have data.
And you, you say you really don't know right off top without looking it up if it helped?
We have millions of data points. No.
All right, okay, let's ask, yeah. Um, anybody else?
So actually we need to do this and if not, they will lose the other part of the grant. Is that?
They would lose our opportunity to renew this software and to upgrade the equipment at the discounted rate because we would not have access to the grant. It's something that it's time to do anyway. We have an inventory and we have a rotation. Same as with, you know, Chromebooks for students or laptops for teachers, all of that. We keep track of it.
Any other questions, board members? Roll call.
Yes, Board President, Mr. Patterson?
Abstain.
Board Secretary, Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Board Vice President, Mr. Dawson?
Yay.
Board Member, Ms. Griffin?
Yay.
Board Member, Mr. Hannah?
Yeah.
Board Member, Mr. Buchanan?
Yeah.
Board Member, Mr. Myrick?
Yay.
Motion carries.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
I'll, I'll cover this part.
I'll, I'll cover this part. So, um, on the agenda, motion number six as well as number seven has been stricken from the July 17th, excuse me, June 17th agenda. So we don't need to even make a motion for six or seven.
And that'll be brought back in July at that meeting. Those two motions will be brought back in July once it's put in the budget.
Okay, all right. I make a motion to renew Arbor Management Incorporated for Food Services for the 2025-2026 school year at a 3.6% increase uh, of five thousand, nine hundred eighty-one dollars, seventy-six cent for a total cost of one hundred and seventy-two thousand, one hundred and twelve dollars and eighty-one cent. Um, can I get a second?
Second. Yeah, stroke Griffin.
So, do we have any discussion on that? Anybody?
Yes, Ms. Gibson.
Um, okay, she's going, how you doing?
Good evening, Board, uh, Staff and Guests. Um, this evening, you're going to be asked to approve the Arbor contract. Last year, we went out for bid. Arbor won the bid. We have the option of renewing this contract for four terms. This is the first year. Their request for the 3.6% is within ISVE limits. The 3.6% currently we pay for breakfast, a dollar ninety-five. It would mean the breakfast would go up to two dollars and two cents. Lunch would go up to two, from two eighty-five to two ninety-five. But of course, our students do not pay for the meals. We are a CEP school, which is Community Eligibility Provision, which, um, all of our students are, um, the CEP school means all enrolled students at Lindup School District 92 are eligible to receive a healthy breakfast and lunch at school at no charge for the 25-26 school year. This CEP is going to need to be renewed next year. It's four years. Um, so next April, we will be coming back to request that you, um, approve a renewal of this. So our students, um, they all receive free meals. We currently, um, the current cost, um, for the free meals is offset by the National School Lunch Program, the Illinois Free Lunch and Breakfast Program, um, as well as the Snack Program. These programs, um, the National School Lunch Program is a, actually gives us back per lunch a total of two dollars and, that'd be nice, two dollars and, no, four dollars and fifty-four cents. Now, I know that four dollars and fifty-four cents is a lot more than the two, oh, two, or the two ninety-five they're charging. This cost is also for the staff of Arbor, the chef who cooks the food, the nutritionalist. It also offsets some of the, um, lunch monitors that we have so that this program, um, is actually paid for completely, I mean, that it's not use, it's not using pretty, um, educationally funded expenses. Any questions?
Did I understand you correctly? When you said the overage that they pay, uh, we can use that toward our staff, like our lunch monitors? Is that what you said?
Well, it's used to pay, it's some of it, it's, it's used to pay the, um, the cook and the nutritionalist, and then two of our, I guess you would call them monitors, two of the monitors, Mr. Pope and Ms. Stein, who actually work in the kitchen.
Okay.
They are, they help prepare the food. They're, I don't know if you want to call, we call them all lunch monitors, but they're actually lunch program staff.
Yes.
Okay. Um, offsets not all of it, but most of the, most of the expense of that.
And lastly, um, because of the price point, do we have to eventually go out to bid for that to get new, um?
We went out for bid last year.
Oh, okay.
And it's good for four years, so we're just the first year of renewal. Um, we'll have three more years on this.
Got you. Thank you so much.
Yeah, I have one question. I know you had said that we're voting on this now, but what were you referring to in April?
That's the CEP. That's the Community Eligibility Provision.
Okay.
Um, so we don't actually, we pay the, um, we pay Arbor for the meals each, um, each month, and then the funds actually come from the state and from the federal. They don't actually come from the students, so the students get, there's no cost to parents and guarantees they all get a good lunch and a good breakfast if they show up for breakfast.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I had a question too. Um, one of the first things my son asked me, he's a fifth grader going to be sixth grade, was, Dad, are you gonna fix those lunches? And that was one of his first things he asked me. So, um, I'm just, my question is, are we, is there anything we can do to give kids with this company, you know, we keep them like, uh, change your options or kind of every so often, kind of have them, you know, change the food and, and give them some other options that they could taste test and?
They have, they have, um, some new items they're entering, they're going to be, um, providing the students this year. I don't know exactly what they were, but I know there's like six new items that are going on the menu each month.
Okay.
Um, we can, and it's one of the suggestions, is to have a student, um, committee. It's, it's composed of students and staff and, um, the actual company, um, representatives. And they taste test things, they make recommendations to students. Um, we did that at a prior school I was at. It was very successful. It's done over the lunch program. You pick, generally, you pick, um, two representatives from each grade level. So, um, in, generally, we started at second grade, um, for, so there was a good number of students. So we got opinions from the small, as well as the, you know, the eighth graders. Um, I, I would recommend it. It would bring the, so what these students do, the representatives, they actually act as, um, kind of a liaison between that and their class. And they actually talk to the students and find out what they're interested in. They bring it to the meeting. So it, all the students feel that they have a voice in what they're eating. We can implement that very easily. It's one of the suggestions of the, um, actually, one of the National Food School Lunch Program suggestions that you actually have this committee at every school.
Okay. Anybody else? Any, any more questions, board members?
No.
Roll call, please.
Board President, Mr. Patterson.
Yeah.
Board Vice President, Mr. Dawson.
Yeah.
Board Secretary, Ms. Johnson.
Yes.
Board Member, Ms. Griffin.
Yeah.
Board Member, Mr. Hannah.
Yeah.
Board Member, Mr. Myrick.
Yeah.
Board Member, Mr. Buchanan.
Yeah.
Motion.
Motion carries. Thank you. Thank you, thank you. You got some.
Um, actually, the next one on the agenda, isn't it IMRF?
One second, Ms. Gibson.
Yes.
Motion.
Make the look.
Yeah, I make a motion to approve the resolution of wanting authorized Illinois Municipal Retirement Fund agent.
JP Patterson, second. Any discussion? She gonna present it? Okay, she gonna present this.
Tonight, you're going to be asked to approve, um, our new CSBO, Courtney Gutierrez, as an authorized agent for IMRF. Um, the Illinois Pension Code requires that, by law, to appoint an individual, um, as the district's authorized agent. This authorized agent, um, is responsible for determining whether the employee is, um, eligible for IMRF. There's a 600 rule minimum for IMRF employees. Uh, they also enroll the employees. They, um, fill out forms for them. They fill out disability forms. They do all the, um, reporting, um, monthly for the contributions. This act, IMRF, um, originally, um, was created, uh, created annuities and benefits for the municipalities. Uh, the IMRF was enacted by legislation from the 61st, um, General Assembly back in 1939. IMRF actually opened their doors in 1941. The reason IMRF, public schools and library, IMRF's public schools and public schools were actually brought into IMRF in 1948. Originally, it was, um, the municipalities were like villages. They were, um, libraries, they were public works. They were all of the government agencies that are not, basically non-for-profit. Non-for-profits like schools, they don't have profit sharing. They don't have matched 401B or 401Ks. They have 403Bs, but that's something the employee, um, actually, um, wait, um, why don't, that's, the, uh, 403B is something the employee solely, um, contributes to. So this was to help with, um, help with pensions for, um, the nonprofit organizations, the local governments. So that's what, that's where IMRF actually, um, started. So, uh, we need to have an authorized agent. We're required by law. Generally, the CSBO, so I, um, would like to recommend that you approve, um, Ms. Gutierrez this evening. And there is a lot of training that's available to her if she needs it from IMRF. They have onsite, they have online, they have a lot of different, you know, variations. Any questions?
Any questions, board members? Roll call, please.
Board President, Mr. Patterson.
Yeah.
Board Vice President, Mr. Dawson.
Yeah.
Board Secretary, Ms. Johnson.
Yes.
Board Member, Ms. Griffin.
Yeah.
Motion carries.
No, hold on. Sorry. You gotta read the resolution.
Oh, okay. Thanks. Ms. Johnson.
Whereas the Board of Education of Lindup Elementary School District 92 is authorized to appoint an authorized Illinois Municipal Retirement Fund agent, and it's desirable to do so. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Education of Lindup Elementary School District 92 does hereby appoint Courtney Gutierrez as an authorized agent. Be it further resolved that the Secretary of the Board of Education is authorized and directed to file a duly certified copy of the resolution with the Illinois Municipal Retirement Fund adopted this day, 17th of June, 2025.
Second. Oh.
You second. So we'll do the roll call.
Roll call.
So just for the record, Mrs. Maxine Johnson made the motion. The second was done by our Vice President, or excuse, our President, Mr. Patterson. And we'll do the roll call now. So, Mr., um, President, Mr. Patterson.
Yeah.
Vice President, Mr. Dawson.
Yeah.
Board Secretary, Ms. Johnson.
Yes.
Board Member, Ms. Griffin.
Yeah.
Board Member, Mr. Hannah.
Yeah.
Board Member, Mr. Myrick.
Yeah.
Board Member, Mr. Buchanan.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay.
Motion carries.
Motion carries.
Board Member Brian Dawson, I make a motion to approve Courtney Gutierrez, CSBO, to become the Illinois Municipal Retirement Fund IMRF agent.
Cheryl Griffin, I second.
Roll call, please. No questions, right? Roll call.
So you have, Ms. Gibson, talking about that.
Supposed to do it twice, it's on twice. We did it. We did, we did a name.
Yeah, we're naming her now.
Yep, we'll strike, number 10 will be stricken from the agenda.
It is. Okay, Board President, report. So I do have a statement prepared from our legal team, first and foremost. So as a board, as Board President of Lindup School District 92, I want to assure you that the goal of this board is to ensure the community that serving the students and community is our top priority. Uh, this board understands its critical role and its district's mission and the trust, uh, the community places in it. We are committed to transparency, accountability, and integrity in all that we do. The seven members sitting before you are the Board of Education for Lindup School District. Any member who chooses to act in their individual capacity is not representing the Board of Education for Lindup School District 92. And those school board members can be held personally liable when acting outside of their official capacity with their fellow school board members. Although we may not always agree, the board is united in its commitment to our students, staff, and community. We recognize the importance of listening to the community and addressing concerns. Thank you for your continued support and trust. Um, and I also have, uh, a few more things. Um, really quickly, I just wanted to, uh, acknowledge, uh, we had a couple of, uh, public comments, but it was concerning Freedom School. Um, I believe the board is united with, uh, Freedom School and what's going on. But Freedom School is expensive for Lindup School. Uh, we pay, the taxpayers pay a nice amount of money to send our kids to Freedom School. Um, and I believe we're one of the few people around that actually adopt Freedom School, um, which is, which can be a good thing. But we also want to be good stewards with the funds of Freedom School as well. So we want to make sure that we're safeguarding the taxpayers' dollars and we're not, um, using companies and, and, and giving the money away without vetting and looking into everything and making sure we're not overpaying employees and making sure that we're being physically responsible. So, you know, and I also want to press that as people in leadership, meaning, you know, if you're at the village or if you're at the school board, you know, you guys were right today. People are watching us. They are watching. And most of all, young people. And when you have power or influence and you use it to have young people come and act out and make sure that they do this on behalf of others, you know, we have to be careful with that. You know, uh, a lot of people that had something to say today about Freedom School don't have children here. So I want to make a note of that. You know, some of them get more than that. So, you know, we are. Have a bad question because. 22nd, 2025, all Lindup Board of Education meetings will start at 6:00 PM. And, um, a little background quickly, we wanted to do that to ensure that we give, um, the board members and the families, um, time to make sure we can get off, do our, you know, evening things, and then be able to come and serve the people. That's the reason for the change. Thank you. Superintendent's report.
Good evening, uh, Board of Education, community, and staff. Uh, keeping the main thing, the main thing. And, um, also, no weapon formed shall prosper.
Can we motion to adjourn and, uh, let's reconvene? Okay, it's, it's four of us, so let's, let's do that now. Mr. President.
Can we just say all in favor?
Yeah, all in favor.
Favor, say aye.
Aye.
And we're adjourning at 6:46 for the record.
6:46, yeah.